All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Municipal Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax and Finance Authority Meeting of March 23rd, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Here.
Councilmember Gary is absent. Councilmember Petron.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your pride, visible with liberty and justice. Continuing with our new guidelines, you will now be asked to sign up in advance with your name, address, and item number you wish to speak to. You can do this on the city's website prior to the meeting. When the time comes for public comments, the clerk will call your name and recognize you to speak. Since this is still a new change, there is also a sign-in sheet at the back of the council chambers for you to register tonight. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to make their presentations, and all others may not speak more than three minutes. Item three, approval of special session minutes of September 1, 2020. City Council Finance Committee minutes of September 17, 2020. City Council Special Session Minutes of January 12, 2021. City Council Special Session Minutes of January 26, 2021. And City Council Norman Utilities Authority, or Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax and Finance Authority Minutes of March 9, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Tomed.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The minutes were approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item four, City Council Announcements. I hope Councilmember Bierman, you don't mind. As number one, you're probably always going to go first.
That's fine. I will use this opportunity to give a quick plug for the Street Maintenance Bond coming up next month. There is lots of good information out there about it, and I encourage everyone to look at all the projects. There's a lot of detail. It should not be difficult to see exactly what is going to be happening with your continued tax dollar support. Also, got the news today that I'm sure many of you have been waiting for, that starting on March 29th, all Oklahomans will now be vaccine-eligible, all four phases. Vaccine appointments can be made in a variety of ways through a variety of organizations and entities such as ME Diagnostics, Norman Regional Health, Chickasaw Nation, the State Department of Health, or even the Vaccinate Our State Facebook group has proven infinitely helpful in helping people who maybe who are less technologically coordinated get their vaccination appointments. My last comment is that due to the progress on my house and the way things are moving with that, the second meeting in April will be my last meeting. With the timing of putting my house up for sale, I don't want to find myself out of compliance with the charter at any point, and that will also give me a little bit of bandwidth to make sure that I am wrapping up all of those final details in a way that I need to. So, decided to plant that flag to give some certainty to everyone and to also give some certainty to my family. So, second April meeting will be my last. I've been working with Brandy already to make sure that we kind of give a running handing over of the baton. I will do my April oversight meeting with her kind of working alongside me before the meeting, and then afterwards I will do what I can to download everything in my brain, but of course, it's not like I'm leaving the city. I'm just gonna now also be Lee Hall's problem. So, those are my announcements for today, and looking forward to a great meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. That is very bittersweet, and by the time you get your home done, COVID will hopefully be a nightmare of the past, and I look forward to an invitation to your housewarming party.
Absolutely.
And so, City Clerk, can we please make sure that the swearing-in of Councilmember -elect Studley will take place in the first meeting in May? Thank you very much. Councilmember for Ward Three.
Hello, everybody. So, yes, the election day is actually April the 6th, and obviously Ward Three has a runoff, and I definitely agree that the citywide neighborhood streets and secondary streets, the resurfacing bond is hugely important. I encourage everybody to go on the city website. There are so many neighborhood roads and feeder roads and secondary roads, it's impossible to even memorize them all, but fortunately, you can look it up right there on the city website and see which ones you traverse. And it's been a hugely popular program in our community, and it's helped tremendously for our property values and for our, as a result of that, our schools. So, please make sure that you get out and vote. I wanted to give a big shout-out to Councilmember-elect Brandy Studley, and Councilmember Hall and I had the opportunity to attend the Asian Community Vigil, and I just found it to be a really moving experience, and I really appreciated the opportunity and the invitation. And Baca, on the menu for the agenda for Baca on April the 1st, is a discussion about Neighborhood Alliance, so I encourage everyone to tune in and listen to the committee meeting. That's April 1st. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Petron. Councilmember Hall.
Okay. Well, I think the first thing I'm going to start out with is welcome Councilmember Bierman with open arms to Ward Four. The more the merrier, I like to say. So, I'm looking forward to having you in the hood. Sad to see you go, but happy to have you in the neighborhood. I'd like to invite everybody to join me this coming Saturday on March 27th from 1:00 to 3:00 for the Bishop Creek Watershed 12th Avenue Southeast Cleanup from Lindsay to Boyd Street. Supplies will be provided by our Stormwater Division, and we're going to meet at the west end of the Colonial State Shopping Center, so I hope to see a great turnout to help clean up this roadway. We had been there in the fall. There was plenty to get busy, so I'm sure we'll have our hands full on Saturday as well. Also, working on coordinating neighborhood meetings along with cleanups of local parks. Working on scheduling now for the South Ridge Neighborhood and also the neighborhood along Morningside and Ponca. So, I'll be posting that on my Facebook page as soon as we get that nailed down. Also, want to continue supporting the Street Maintenance Bond Program that'll be on the ballot on April 6th. I took a look at the Ward Four projects, which are considerable. So, there's five different categories of maintenance bond projects in Ward Four. Four of the five will be attended to: concrete. There are six projects, urban asphalt, 14 projects, urban reconstruction, seven projects, and preventive maintenance, 23 projects. On the city website, as we mentioned, there's considerable information, but just added yesterday is an interactive map that you can literally look up every single street across Norman and see the cost of the project and what type of project it is, and also the year in the one-to-five-year period that we're talking about, what year that project is online to be attended to. So, there is a lot of information there. So, if you want to know how your own neighborhood is going to be impacted, I really urge you to take a look at that map. It's pretty amazing. So, let's see. The next thing I want to talk about is the historic preservation efforts in Norman. This is not on the agenda this way, but this is Historic Preservation Night. There are literally three items, well, two items on the agenda and one announcement that I'm going to make now that concern historic districts in Norman. As many of you know, all three historic districts are located in Ward Four. We have a Historic District Commission that oversees how the guidelines are written and executed in each one of these historic districts, and this commission has been at work now for the past couple of years to update the revisions and edit a new version of the historic district guidelines, which hasn't been done since 2009. So, the commission is now in the final phases of working on a draft. The next phase is a really important one, and that's where the public gets to participate. So, there are tentatively two public meetings being scheduled on April 12th and April 19th. Time and location to be determined, as well as a Zoom option, I'm sure. And this is the opportunity for the public to review the guidelines and offer any comments that they might want to contribute as to how they feel about the historic districts and how they see the guidelines that are being recommended. So, I urge everyone, especially those who live in historic districts, to follow along now and take a look at the document as it gets reviewed. This is an important part of our story, and it's something that I have a personal interest in and have for a very, very long time. And so, moving forward with a way to preserve our historic properties and neighborhoods as well as providing the resources for the people who live there, this is an important step forward as we have a new set of guidelines to operate under. So, hope to have lots of participation on the 12th and the 13th. And then I also just wanted to mention that you can request an absentee ballot up through Tuesday, March 30th at 5:00 PM. The absentee ballot must be notarized this year. That's a change from last year, and I want to also just keep throwing it out there that I am a notary for just this purpose, to make sure that people have an easy access to the ballot box, but there are also multiple opportunities across the community to get your ballot notarized. So, just making sure that everybody knows their path and knows what their voting plan is for April 6th.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nash.
Yeah. I've got a question for Mr. Pyle. I'd like to make an announcement on status of Cedar Lane and 36 stop signs, but first I needed a status update on that. What is the progress on getting those two stop signs at Cedar Lane and 36th?
I see Mr. Sean O'Leary, and Mr. O'Leary is probably closest to that conversation. Mr. O'Leary, what do we know?
Happy to report, we are, Councilmember, we are conducting an update to that traffic study there. As we indicated to you, I think it was last week after that last accident occurred, we have been watching that intersection very closely for actually years, and this traffic study will tell us if there's a trend in more accidents and more safety concerns that would then qualify the intersection in our traffic code for, as you indicated, always stop. So, should have results of that here in about a week, and we'll be happy to report that to you. Again, the results of the analysis will tell us whether our traffic code would recommend the four-way stop there.
So, that traffic study is supposed to give us some indication on the amount of risk of a person traveling through the intersection for an accident?
Yeah. It's a very prescriptive code. Our traffic code is like so many municipalities around the country, where we are looking at traffic volume numbers on all legs. We're looking at numbers of accidents, types of accidents, other site triangle concerns, all those sort of things combined would indicate that we have a dangerous condition that would be remedied, in this case, by a four-way stop or some other traffic control device. Obviously, our goal here is to keep our intersections safe. This one, although it feels uncomfortable because it's literally down in a hole, if you will, really low-lying intersection, the trend has been actually for fewer accidents in recent years, not more. So, that's why we haven't implemented the four-way stop up to this point.
So, that traffic study doesn't account for, say, residents that live in the area that understand that that's a very dangerous intersection, either avoid it or approach it with an extraordinary amount of caution?
Well, we try to not, we try to define dangerous, I guess, in this case by the code that we, that you have adopted as a council. And again, that indicates, that uses several indicators to tell us whether that's a dangerous intersection through experience or not. And as I indicated, while it feels uncomfortable, it just hasn't proven out to be an intersection that has more than about two accidents per year. And we have many intersections that have multiple accidents per year that do warrant a four-way stop.
And I appreciate this conversation. However, this is well past an announcement and is now becoming a discussion item that is not on our agenda, unfortunately. But thank you for that line of questioning, and I think Mr. O'Leary will continue to provide updates as they come around, and please include us all. So, Mr. Nash, any further announcements?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
Like my colleagues have already said, the April 6 election is very important to continue the Street Maintenance Bond. I would also encourage the residents to go to our Norman Parks and Recreation Facebook page, where you can see about our, like, Earth Day Park cleanup and all the different events and stuff. I recently started going through it just the other day to try to find something, and there's like a drive-in movie thing happening Friday night. You could go see Trolls World Tour and get some free popcorn. So, be checking all our Facebooks. And then in April, we're also doing Big Trash Pickup, and on our city Facebook page, we have all the dates listed based on your trash pickup dates, and that's about all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I echo many of the same comments my colleagues have given about various things going on in the city, but I do definitely want to kind of highlight the transportation bond that is coming up and encourage Ward Seven residents specifically to get out and vote for this. There are 11 separate streets in Norman that are in Ward Seven to be touched by this, by this bond proposal. Seven separate neighborhoods will benefit from this package in Ward Seven, and the only real neighborhood in Ward Seven that's not being touched by this, this new bond recently got new streets in the most recent 2016 Road Maintenance Bond. And so, it's really benefited Ward Seven in many ways, and neighborhoods all across the city in all the wards, really, and that's been the real benefit of this bond. And again, it was first approved in 2006 and re-approved in 2011, and then again in 2016, and it has increased in voter approval each time based on the results, again, neighborhood streets that people see and use every single day, and it's been very successful. So, I'm more than happy to speak with, meet with, talk on the phone with any residents that are interested in knowing more details about this, about how the city staff comes up with the ranking for streets and when they need to be repaired or replaced. Get that question a lot. So, definitely encourage that, and please feel free to reach out with any questions. Also, want to encourage folks to tune in on Thursday at 4:00 for our first Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting in several months. It's going to be kind of a refresher, but we'll have updates on the public transit system, ridership numbers, reports. We do that every month for anybody interested in public transit ridership in Norman and plans for what we're wanting to do with the future of public transit in Norman. You can tune in every month to the CPT Committee, and we talk about those things. We'll also be getting an update on two of the 2019 road bond projects, both of which happened to be in Ward Seven. Jenkins Avenue from Lindsay to Constitution, and then Constitution Avenue from Jenkins to the railroad tracks. Both voter-approved bond projects that we're hoping to get underway in the next year or two. So, those are important ones to tune into. And then, again, just the trash pickup is another big one. Encourage Ward Seven residents to take a look and see what day your normal trash day is, and the city website has listed what date your big trash day will be, where you can set stuff out at the curb, and we'll pick it up for you. So, I appreciate that, and looking forward to the meeting. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Peacock.
Thanks. Yeah, running with the common theme of cleanup events tonight. We'll be having one at Ruby Grant Park on April 10th. So, not only did I want to encourage all residents to come out and join that effort, but come experience this wonderful addition to our community firsthand. I know a lot of people still don't get to realize this jewel we have in Ward Eight, but please, it's there for everyone, so come experience and enjoy it. I'll be posting a sign-up link on social media where you can email me directly for some more info, but yeah, very much looking forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Councilmember. I wanted to mention another cleanup that's going on this Sunday, actually, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Wood Creek. So, very similar to what Councilmember Hall shared. I will actually be at that one with some students because we're rolling into Earth Month, my friends, and we're springtime, getting excited to be outside, so I encourage you to find one of the many cleanup events that have been scheduled and get a little sweat equity into your community. Speaking of hopefully some sweat, Move With the Mayor is this Saturday. We're going to Saxon Park at 9:00 AM, and the super cool City of Norman water bottles are in for those who choose to participate. So, I hope to see you at 9:00 AM at Saxon Park off of Highway 9 on Saturday. Also on Saturday, kudos to the Councilmember-elect Studley and Social and Justice League of Norman for doing the candlelight vigil that I was unable to attend on Sunday, but the Norman Police Department is also hosting a conversation in partnership with one of our organizations here in Norman to discuss safety issues facing our Asian community, and that will be a Zoom meeting. You can look at their Facebook page for more information on how to register. I'm looking forward to that conversation as well. In the line of cleanup, we've got rain barrels you can still order by the end of this week. Pro tip, I learned this the hard way with those ridiculously freezing weathers, empty your rain barrel when it freezes, because we had to buy a new one because it's split down the middle. So, there we go. But you can order that, and then pickup is April 2nd and April 3rd. And then the last thing that I wanted to share, in addition to get vaccinated and vote yes on April 6th, thank you all for covering that, we have been interviewing with the city manager and our chief diversity and equity officer, Cynthia Allen, a summer fellow. So, you may recall that I was selected for the fourth cohort, I believe, in the Bloomberg Harvard US City Leadership Program, and we've had many extra opportunities come from that. One involves staff, which we'll look forward to share that when they're done with their innovation track, but we now have access to a summer fellow who will spend the summer here in Norman, hopefully, helping us establish this brand-new position, doing research, building relationships. So, Cynthia Allen has all of the tools that she needs to really hit the ground running. So, thank you to that program for free resources that helps us move forward on that very important initiative. So, lots of fun announcements, lots going on. It definitely feels like springtime in Norman, Oklahoma. Okay, on to item five, something I'm very excited about, Resolution 2021-106, awarding the 2021 Human Rights Award. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, awarding the 2021 City of Norman Human Rights Award in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission. Whereas, the City of Norman entrusts the Norman Human Rights Commission with the duties of studying problems of discrimination, advising city council on human rights issues, and coordinating citizen involvement in the promotion of human rights. Whereas, the Norman Human Rights Commission seeks to promote and encourage fair treatment and mutual understanding among all citizens, and to combat all prejudice, bigotry, and discrimination that prevent individuals from reaching their full potential as human beings. And whereas, the Norman Human Rights Commission selects an individual or group in Norman to receive the Norman Human Rights Award based on exceptional achievement, outstanding effort, and/or leadership to promote human rights and equality, and to serve as an example to all. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the City of Norman, Oklahoma, in conjunction with the Norman Human Rights Commission, does hereby award the 2020 City of Norman Human Rights Award to Kay Ham. I'd like to recognize Cynthia Allen, our Chief Diversity and Equity Officer, to make a few comments about Ms. Ham.
Good evening. Thank you so much. We are so honored, on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, to honor Ms. Ham for her service to the City of Norman and into her service also to the Human Rights Commission. She's served on the commission since July 2008. This award just really is the selflessness and the dedication, and so it's our honor to award you with this Human Rights Award.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this very, very much, and I would just like to say a few words if you've got a minute. It's just my honor. I'm very humbled about this. I had not expected it at all, so it's a great surprise. Just a little bit of history. I on the Human Rights Commission for a long time, Rosenthal was mayor, she appointed me in her first term, so it's been a while, you know, for me to serve. I served as vice-chair first, then when Michael Ridgeway stepped down to go to Dubai, I became chair, not on my own account, but the commission wanted that to happen, so I did. It was great. Under Mayor Rosenthal, we, some of the things that we did, we opened the mayor's breakfast, which I'm sure you're all aware of, on Martin Luther King Day to the public. It had been limited to just a certain number of people, not just dignitaries, and I believe that we've enlarged it to at least 300 people in the past couple of years. The commission has presented a lot of proclamations, as I'm sure you all know, recognizing many significant events and people. Among them is Black History Month, GLBT History Month, Women's History Month, Martin Luther King Day. There's food at that one, and lots more. World AIDS Day, Hispanic Heritage, et cetera. The GLBT History Month was not an easy one to do. That was pretty stressful in those days. Unfortunately, we made it work. I hope that you've seen the video of it. To me, inclusive means everyone as well. So, I hope that that change is continuing to come about in the City of Norman. It really has been my great pleasure and honor to serve on the mission. We've done so many things. There are so many smart men and women who served with me on that. They're dedicated to committing, committed to ensuring that all of our citizens, without regard to race, gender, sexual orientation, everything else, are welcome and have value. That's a major objective of the commission. We've gone through many good things together and some not-so-good things together, and I will always continue to thank you. I just can't thank you enough. Thanks again.
Hey, we can't thank you enough for your years of service. Again, congratulations.
Been my pleasure. It's been my pleasure.
All right, we will now move on to proclamations and get comfortable, everyone. We have a lot of amazing proclamations to recognize tonight. April, my birth month is a very popular month. All right, our first one is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as National Volunteer Month in the City of Norman. Whereas since its inception as National Volunteer Week in 1974, the designation recognizes honors and encourages the efforts of volunteers who donate their time and talents. And whereas communities rely on selflessness of volunteers who provide great services to tackle society's greatest challenges and help those in need. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted our ability to gather for volunteering, we recognize nonprofits still have services to meet and citizens that needs to be met. And whereas National Volunteer Week 2021 will be honored on April 2018 through 24th, 2021, and individuals, schools, businesses, nonprofits, and every person are encouraged to take part in safe, social distance service. And whereas by continuing our efforts to be an inclusive and engaged community, volunteers inspire service, resiliency, and enrich the lives of our citizens and fortitude of our community. Now therefore, I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as National Volunteer Month in the City of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in reflecting on the importance of these values and how they may impact each of our lives daily. I'd like to recognize Darren Wilson, president and CEO of United Way of Norman, Jackie Knack, regional director of the Cleveland County Health Department. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. We really appreciate, obviously, the recognition and the opportunity to to be here tonight. We don't take lightly the volunteers that we have in our community. But we know that the work that we do in our community, it doesn't happen without volunteers. It just doesn't happen with partnerships that we have with the city, with our our public school districts, and many other organizations. But the work that happens in our community where we know that we change lives, it doesn't happen without our volunteer base. So many of you, I think, probably volunteer with United Way or other organizations. And I just want to recognize the work of all volunteers that make such an impact and change in our community. So thank you so much.
And this is Jackie Knack. I'm with the Health Department. And I also would like to say thank you so much for recognizing the Cleveland County Health Department, my team, and all of our volunteers as well. We are truly honored to care for our community. We could not do it without all of the support that we receive from all of our community partners and the City of Norman, and we would like to also say thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Norman City Council, thank you to both of you. You have picked up between your two organizations so much through the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are in your debt, and I will never forget how hard you both have worked to take care of our residents. So thank you. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of that proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of that proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. On to our next proclamation, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as, oops, excuse me, proclaiming the month of April 21 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the City of Norman. Let's go ahead and entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of this proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the City of Norman. Whereas the month of April has been declared National Child Abuse Prevention Month in our country. And whereas in 2019, Cleveland County reported 749 victims of child abuse and neglect. And whereas the Norman community provides children services on abuse and neglect issues and are united in promoting advocacy children. And whereas communities must make every effort to report victims of child abuse or neglect, and the Norman community serves a number of children locally. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and education activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between all sectors of the community. And whereas the Norman community is invested in prevention and advocacy through education to schools, civic groups, and churches, volunteer efforts to local organizations, and philanthropic contributions to assist child abuse response, treatment, and advocacy. Now therefore, I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in the City of Norman and urge all citizens to dedicate ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. I'd like to recognize Andre Danley, executive director of the Mary Abbott House, to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and council. Andre could not make it tonight. So I'm Tara Evans, and I will be accepting it on behalf of the Mary Abbott Children's House and wanted to say thank you and how grateful we are for your support. It does take our entire community. We served over 2,000 children last year. So this is something that touches every single one of us, either directly or indirectly, and doing our prevention education. I know I couldn't do any of that without our support, and we couldn't, we wouldn't be here without your support and raising awareness. So thank you for, you know, supporting the Abbott House and for supporting the children and our community and providing them happier and safer futures in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, for all that your organization does to the lives of our children. And to all of the residents who helped with the stuffed animal drive this past fall. Mary Abbott House benefited from that. So thank you for those efforts. All right, now on to proclamation 2021-17, proclaiming Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day and the month of April 2021 as Green Norman Eco Month in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day as Green Norman Eco Month in the City of Norman. Whereas Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day to increase environmental awareness and to highlight devastating effects of pollution to our air, water, and soil to the nation. And whereas 22 million Americans celebrated the first Earth Day on April 22nd, 1970. Whereas the City of Norman Parks and Recreation, Utilities, and Public Works Department have planned a series of events to celebrate this important milestone and provide Norman residents an opportunity to get involved. And whereas Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 marks the 51st anniversary of Earth Day. And whereas the month of April 2021 is recognized as Green Norman Eco Month with free activities to be held at various locations across the city. And whereas we encourage the community to come to be a part of these free public events and learn new things about the world around us. Now therefore, I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day and the month of April 2021 as Green Norman Eco Month in the City of Norman, and encourage our citizens to make a difference in our community, to think, reduce, reuse, recycle, replenish, restore, refresh, plant, rebuild, repurpose, and respect. To accept this proclamation, I would like to recognize Debbie Smith and Jerry Gates from the Environmental Services Division. Take it away.
My name is Jerry Gates. I'm Assistant Environmental Services Manager. And I want to thank the council for recognizing Earth Day and Earth Month. Earth Day is recognized as the largest secular event worldwide, and for cleaning environment continues. As mentioned in the proclamation, the first Earth Day was held in 1970. It gave voice to an emerging public consciousness about the environment and our planet. Leading up to Earth Day, we consumed large amounts of leaded gas and drove very inefficient automobiles. Industries belched out smoke, polluted water, and there was little fear of bad press or even law enforcement. Air pollution was commonly accepted as a smell of prosperity. And mainstream America remained largely oblivious to environmental concerns. As Earth Day progressed and people became more aware, we all became aware of how a polluted environment threatens our health. The theme for this year, Earth Day and Earth Month, is restore our earth. We will be focusing on natural processes, emerging technologies, innovative thinking that can restore and protect the world's ecosystems. Over a billion people around the world will be joining in the recognition of Earth Day. And to quote Helen Keller, "Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much." We have a number of upcoming events and activities planned. These activities will be posted on greennorman.org. Please check back often for the updates. And protecting and conserving our resources makes a difference to our community, our world, and is another reason Norman is such a great place to live. Again, thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Gates, and I appreciate all of staff's efforts to get these events planned. We will not have our Earth Day festival, but we're slowly getting back to normal with that, and I deeply appreciate all of your efforts. Okay, proclamation 2021-18, proclaiming Friday, April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Norman. I'll now entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Sunday, April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Norman. Whereas Oklahoma has recognized Arbor Day through observance and ceremonies for more than 100 years. Whereas we recognize the importance of planting trees to beautify our parks and public places and around our homes and businesses. And whereas we recognize the environmental, social, and economic benefits of trees, such as providing shade, creating a sense of unity in visually pleasing neighborhoods, reducing home heating and cooling costs, reducing air pollution, noise pollution, and soil erosion, and enhancing property value and economic vitality of business areas. And whereas it is the purpose of Arbor Day to encourage the planting of trees in urban and rural areas, promote proper management of trees, and to remember the many benefits we receive from trees. And whereas Norman has been awarded for the 19th consecutive year Tree City USA Status by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas the City of Norman Parks and Recreation and City Tree Board have scheduled an Arbor Day observance Friday, April 30th, 2021 at 10:00 AM in Reeves Park with a tree planting and presentation. Now therefore, I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the City of Norman and encourage all citizens to observe Arbor Day by planting an Oklahoma proven tree for the benefit of all citizens and that of future generations. I would now like to recognize our city forester, Tim Vermillion, to receive the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks to the city council and Parks and Recreation for making all this possible. Especially Lisa Grig piled massive amounts of information to get us our Tree City USA status every year. Our, we keep, I keep putting the stickers on top of the stickers on the sign and it's getting to be about three quarters of an inch thick. So we've been put the same way every year and it's working. We'll continue to push forward and plant trees to carry on the Arbor Day tradition and to keep getting our USA, Tree USA certification along with our local utility companies. They're becoming Tree Line USAs. So together, we're all working together to try to get as many trees planted as possible. And thank you for reminding everyone about April 30th, tree planting at Reeves Park to celebrate Arbor Day. And we'll just keep planting trees until they tell us to stop. So I appreciate it.
Well, if we have any more historic ice storms, we're never going to be able to stop planting trees. Mr. Vermillion, on behalf of the city council, I want to make sure you know how appreciated you are. I've heard so many wonderful things about interactions with residents that you've had, answering questions, helping remove trees. It's been very, very helpful, and I'm so glad you're a part of the Norman team.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, proclamation 2021-19, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Norman. Whereas fair housing is the law of the state of Oklahoma and is consistent with the principles of equality and justice for all. And whereas the freedom to choose a dwelling has been one held precious in America through the centuries. And whereas equal housing opportunity is a right guarantee to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Act. And whereas April 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the federal fair housing law, also known as Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. Whereas the month of April symbolizes a significant milestone for all Americans to rededicate themselves to this country and the state of Oklahoma's underlying premise that all citizens be guaranteed freedom of choice. And the state publicly reaffirms its public policy to eliminate all vestiges of housing discrimination wherever they exist. And whereas Oklahoma's housing authority and governmental entities are united in the common goal of providing safe and sanitary housing for all, without regard to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, handicap, familiar status, or gender identity. Now therefore, I, mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mary Doolin, executive director of the Metropolitan Fair Housing Council of Oklahoma Incorporated, to receive the proclamation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. We are indeed honored that the City of Norman would again select the Metropolitan Fair Housing Council to provide fair housing services for your community. Though the Civil Rights Act was initially passed in 1968, 53 years ago, it only provided protections for people under the categories of race, color, religion, and national origin. Women were left out of this list. Women were not added until 1974. That's when women had the right to legally purchase or rent property without a man having to co-sign for them. It wasn't until 1988 that families with children and people with disabilities were added to this. We are pleased and honored to be a part of the Norman family, and we fully recognize that though the Fair Housing Act was enacted 53 years ago, it was only 54 years ago that the City of Norman was integrated. As you know, and with the ceremony that the city had regarding the sundowntown issue. It was 54 years ago before the town of Norman actually integrated. It was known as the sundowntown. We thank you for your service and recognition for equal housing opportunity for all of your citizens. We look forward to continued service. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your service and for that reminder of how far Norman has come, but also how far we still have to go.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
All right, last but certainly not least, proclamation 2021-20, proclaiming the month of April 2021 as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of April, 2021, as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month and Friday, April 2nd, 2021, as World Autism Day in the city of Norman. Whereas autism affects an estimated 1 in 54 children and 1 in 45 adults. It is a complex disorder that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges. And whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and repetitive behaviors, can affect anyone regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life. And whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help advance research, providing a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout their lifespan. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence. And whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information, support, and opportunities to live up to their greatest potential. And whereas the city of Norman is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Day to address the diverse needs of individuals and families affected by autism. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2021, as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month and Friday, April 2nd, 2021, as World Autism Day in the city of Norman to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. To recognize this proclamation or to receive this proclamation, I would like to recognize Mr. Tom Taylor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Taylor. I am co-chair of Autistic Adults of Oklahoma, and I am a resident of Ward 4. On behalf of Autistic Adults of Oklahoma and the autistic community, I thank Mayor Clark and the esteemed members of the city council for this proclamation. This past year has been difficult for everyone, and it has been especially difficult for the autistic and disabled communities. We have been witnesses to our hard-fought victories, being undermined by non-disabled people attempting to misuse the Americans with Disability Act to make legally unrecognizable disability rights claims about not having to obey mask mandates. As the disabled community works to rebuild the credibility of our community, this proclamation will serve as a testament of the progress we have already made. Thank you for everything you have done for the autistic and disabled communities, and thank you for attempting to keep Norman safe for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I appreciate your attention. Okay, that leads us to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items 13 through 33 excluding item 32 on the consent.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Item 32 is being withdrawn by staff. After speaking with the election board, it was determined that the only remaining months in 2021 in which candidate elections may be held are September or November. This is not a decision of the city of Norman. This is another byproduct of preemption at the state level that impacts how we do business at the local level. I want to make it a point that everyone needs to call their state legislators and tell them to really fulfill the remainder of the term for Ward 2. Staff has noted that two people have signed up to speak under this item tonight. However, since this is being withdrawn, no comments will be taken. If you still wish to make comments, you may do so under the miscellaneous discussion at the end of the meeting. The motion on the floor is to place items 13 through 33 excluding item 32 on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion to place items 13 through 33 excluding item 22 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Excluding item 32, making sure we don't get that messed up. Item 13, ordinance 2021-41 upon first reading, amending Chapter 10 of the city code to prohibit smoking of marijuana and marijuana vaping in certain public places and deleting sections concerning prevention of youth access to tobacco for purposes of internal code consistency. Item 14, submission of the finance investment reports as of February 28th, 2021. Item 15, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of February, 2021. Item 16, submission of the city manager's contract and change order report. Item 17, request for proposal from NAPA Auto Parts Integrated Business Solutions to provide vehicle and equipment parts management and supply services and approval of contract 2021-101. Item 18, bid for the purchase of copper meter gels for water meters, high-density polyethylene plastic, HDPE, meter boxes with cast iron lids, and water line repair clamps for the line maintenance division. Item 19, easement 2021-25, acceptance of a permanent off-site sanitary sewer easement donated by Kent Connolly to serve the Artisan Crossing addition, a planned unit development located north of Tecumseh Road and west of 12th Avenue Northwest. Item 20, easement 2021-75, granting to the Oklahoma Electric Cooperative for installation of underground facilities for a new water well located in Falls Lakeview Park. Item 21, exchange of titled real property by deed between the city of Norman and Highway 9 Land Company to correct a conveyance of inaccurately identified land and convey the correct and complete parkland grant for the Summit Valley Park site. Item 22, submission of the Certified Local Governments Program 2020-2021 application for funding in the amount of $19,459 to be submitted to the Oklahoma State Historic Preservation Office. Item 23, acceptance of donations in amount of $1,755 from citizens and memorials to be used at the Norman Animal Welfare Center. Item 24, final acceptance and final payment of contract 1718-117 with Crossland Construction Company for the Norman Forward Ruby Grant Park Development Project Phase 1. Item 25, amendment number 1 to contract 1920-133 with Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $6,392,330 to provide for the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the development center portion of the municipal complex renovation project. Item 26, resolution 2021-103, authorizing the city manager or his designee to submit a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration's fiscal year 2021 Low or No Emission Vehicle Program and expressing its amendment to secure funding for the local match if such grant is awarded and project approved. Item 27, resolution 2021-105, appropriating $280,407 from the community parkland fund balance and $62,000 from the room tax fund balance to be used for construction of a parking lot at Ruby Grant Park. Item 28, resolution 2021-109, assigning contract 1617-105 with Cabinetist Engineering LLC to Garver LLC and transferring assignment of all rights and duties as consultant under contract 1617-105 to Garver LLC. Item 29, resolution 2021-110, assigning contracts 1819-87 and 2021-96 with Cabinetist Engineering LLC to Garver LLC and transferring assignment of all rights and duties as engineer under contracts 1819-87 and 2021-96 to Garver LLC. Item 30, amendment number 2 to contract 1617-105 with Cabinetist Engineering LLC, increasing the contract amount by $5,675 or revised contract amount of $434,950 to provide additional professional engineering design services for the James Garner Avenue project from Acre Street to Flood Avenue. Item 31, resolution 2021-112, appropriating $104,900 from the tax increment finance fund balance to fund various maintenance repairs at Legacy Park and University North Park. Item 32 has been withdrawn. Item 33, resolution 2021-108, assigning contract 1213-160 and 1213-165 with Cabinetist Engineering LLC to Garver LLC and assigning all rights and duties as consultant under the contracts to Garver LLC. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I want to say something real quick about Kay Ham. I had my hand up when we were on that, and I guess we missed it, but she is a Ward 7 resident. And when I first thought about running for city council in 2010, well, it was 2011, but I first started thinking about it in 2010. And during a meeting, a very contentious meeting that she talked about, where a proclamation was passed by the council, Case got up at the podium and spoke. And when I went home and re-watched the meeting on YouTube, I wrote down the name of every Ward 7 resident that spoke, or everybody that gave their addresses being in Ward 7. And I specifically noted what she had to say about it. And so when I started running for council a few months later, she was one of the very first doors I ever knocked on, actually, and said, "I saw you speak at that meeting, and I really appreciate what you had to say and what you stand for." And I am honored to have had her support in my runs for council every time and very proud that she's a resident of not just Ward 7, but of our city and that she's been able to do so much for us. So just wanted to say that real quick. Thank you. And then on item 13, I just want to clarify from staff. For those that may be wondering, we're not going above and beyond anything. This is a compliance with state law when it comes to prohibition of smoking cannabis in certain public places. So that's the way I understand it, bringing up to state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. My apologies for missing your hand earlier. Thank you for sharing those comments about Kay Ham. Councilmember Hall?
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to address the consent item number 22 that is accepting a grant for the Certified Local Governments Program from the Historic Preservation Office. We don't have an opportunity very often to talk about historic preservation and the role that it plays in Norman. The CLG is part of the U.S. Department of Interior National Program for development and support of local preservation programs. The designation as a CLG city recognizes Norman's historic preservation efforts and entitles our city to apply for a portion of the education and outreach funding that's set aside by the state Historic Preservation Office out of each year's budget. Funding is intended for historic research, public education, and outreach programs. We've been at this for over 20 years now with the support from CLG funding that's allowed us to create educational materials about historic preservation, to conduct historic and architectural surveys, and to host free workshops and hands-on training programs in historic home repair and design. We've been so fortunate in Norman to have members of our planning staff serving as historic preservation officers to move this effort forward and to use these funds accordingly. An East Star is our historic preservation officer currently and does a wonderful job of trying to educate residents and anyone who wants to invest in a historic home on how to go about it and how to go about it properly. So I really appreciate her efforts and her continued success in getting this funding sent our way and the real return on investment that we've gotten from this particular grant. So thank you to her.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Love your advocacy for our historic districts. Well done. All right, Councilwoman Peacock?
Thanks. Regarding item 26, I just want to publicly express how much I appreciate the city manager's willingness to explore these types of solutions and just want to encourage him to continue to do so.
All right. Any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The consent docket was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 34, preliminary plat for the Monterey addition, generally located one quarter mile south of Cedar Lane Road, east of 12th Avenue Southeast. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the applicant or representing the applicant is Bill Swain, Park Hill Cardinal Engineering, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This should be a fairly simple project. I have an exhibit here. If I can share my screen, that's just the preliminary plat. We'll see how it goes. It's counting down here. We'll see, hopefully. Are you able to see anything on my screen yet?
It says, yes, here we go. Got it.
Okay, success. Okay, this preliminary plat is a redo, a reissuance, really, of a preliminary plat that's been approved and in effect for quite some time. It expired in May for Phase 3. We have completed Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Monterey. We were prepared to start working on Phase 3, which is the last phase of Monterey. And just due to the confusion and COVID and delays, that preliminary plat expired from lack of activity of another final plat in the prescribed time. So we really just kind of updated the incidentals to redo the preliminary plat. And Mike Rainer's here as the developer, but it's really the same as a previously approved preliminary plat, just updating some incidentals and cleaning things up. So really, unless there are some questions, really don't have too much more to present.
Yep, that's how we like it, short and sweet. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall?
I just have a question. I noticed on the staff report that there is an active oil well within this development, and it just mentions that the phasing of the development will take that into consideration. So I was just wondering if you could talk about that a little bit, of how you handle that, what the plan is, how you create a barrier to protect the residents, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit from my perspective, and Mike may want to jump on here and add to that. It is a little bit of a complicating factor with the oil well there. We have made arrangements to get approval from the current owner of that small tract to include that parcel in the preliminary plat. That parcel will revert to Monterey once that well is closed. So we're laying out in the preliminary plat the future plan for that once that well is actually closed or inactive. But there's no real guarantees on that right now. So we have the radius drawn in there. That's the requirements of separation of the houses from the well itself. And I believe there's some agreements in place. We went through all this back when the preliminary plat was first approved with some agreements for fencing and things like that in the interim should that not actually be closed and the land revert back to Monterey to include in the plat. So if Mike, I know Mike's on, if he can unmute or can add to that. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. As you can see on the plat, there's a hundred and twenty-five foot radius from the wellbore itself that no structure can be built around. And then secondly, the well site itself, the pumping unit, that's all that there is out there, excuse me, is the pumping unit. And that is fenced in compliance with the city's newest fencing code. And it's more or less impenetrable to kids, pets, and so forth. The well really hasn't been active. It hasn't produced in a number of years. And we're hoping that here sometime in the not-too-distant future, the well will be plugged and abandoned. And at that time, the lots that you see that have the gray shading over it will then be able to be built on. The radius will be reduced from a hundred and twenty-five feet to forty-five feet. But until that time, really to address your question specifically, the only measure of security that there is is fencing that is around the pumping unit. It's a six-foot fence and it has barbed wire on the top and it has a strand of wire along the bottom to keep any kids or animals to get in underneath that. So with the new fencing ordinance that was passed a few years back, it's about as secure as you can hope for.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other questions there.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
I see no public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I just want to go over a couple of things. I have voted for this plat before, a few years ago. And this specific well site is actually the one that kicked off when I first got elected. It was this well site that kicked off our basically two-year endeavor of redoing, updating our oil and gas ordinances in the city of Norman. But it started with fencing for this specific well. Homes were being developed around this area at a more rapid pace than had previously been seen in the area. And there was a lot of concerns from neighbors like Mike Rayner and neighbors in Cobblestone Creek and Eagle Cliff that were concerned about there's more kids living in this area now. And there have been instances of kids getting injured on these pumping unit sites in Oklahoma. And so we embarked on basically redoing, updating our ordinances to require the fencing that is currently out there. And so I'm definitely very familiar with the history of this specific well site and this plat. So I do support this renewal and I am basically because nothing has changed about it since I approved it years ago. And I'm hoping, because right now we don't really have a automated system or software that notifies people that, you know, a plat, your plat, after five years, it's expiring you, you know, in two months or whatever. You're going to need to come in and get that renewed reminder. Mr. Rayner has, we've talked about it, he knows that it was, you know, ultimately his responsibility to keep up with that, but you know, there's lots of instances where government agencies and other things are able to, you know, have some sort of automated electronic notice that goes out to people. Especially when you're talking about timeframes that are several years in between. So that's something I'm hoping with some of our new systems that we might be bringing online for the city here in the future that we'll be able to address those types of things. And maybe we won't have so many or projects that have to come back for us that really haven't changed tremendously. So I do support this project and I do encourage my colleagues to support it as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Petron.
Thank you. Okay, so Councilmember Holman brought up a good point and I'm shutting this door because my kids are hollering at the dog. So the permit for the plat expires. At what point does the permit for a inactive wellhead expire in the city of Norman? That was a real question.
Would you like me to comment on that?
According to our ordinances, I think, probably the city attorney, but sure, if you would like, do you know?
Yeah, I'm unfamiliar. There's nothing in the city of Norman ordinances that addresses that. That's actually handled by the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. A well that is inactive for a period of twelve months has to either be plugged or filed for an exemption. This well hasn't filed for that exemption, to my knowledge. I've checked on it. And forcing the plug of a well like that would be in the under the purview of
Okay, but we don't have anything in our municipal ordinances as far as the insurance that they keep or anything about whether or not
They have to maintain, they have to maintain their insurances. But there isn't anything in the city ordinances that would force them to plug and abandon that well, no.
Okay. I would be curious if staff could look and see about highest and best use on land, if there is some way that in the future this doesn't happen again because clearly that's a neighborhood and they're trying to put homes on it and rooftops that are wanted by residents and if they're not going to be using that. I mean, I would think at some point it's going, it should be allowed to lapse.
That's a great point and I totally agree with you.
This is unfortunately something that is entirely within the Corporation Commission's purview and something that we're preempted on unfortunately. So I don't know that there's anything we could do to force that issue without some legislative changes.
So it can just sit there forever inactive and residents in that area aren't able to finish the neighborhood that they're buying.
I mean, I think it's important to note that the well predated the neighborhood, but yes, it's up to the Corporation Commission to force them to plug the well after so many months of inactivity. And I don't think that happens very often. That has not happened in this case, certainly.
If the developer wanted to, or the residents in the neighborhood wanted to ask that the city put in an application to the Corporation Commission to request it be plugged, is that something that we could help them do?
I don't know if we would have standing to ask that someone else's well be plugged, but that's something we can look at. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing done, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Item thirty-five, ordinance twenty-two-one dash thirty, granting special use for fraternity or sorority house for properties located at eleven fifteen College Avenue that is currently zoned R-three multifamily dwelling district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So there.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Matthew Seibert, architect, representing the applicant, to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. My name is Matt Seibert. I'm with Focaspen Architecture, representing women of Alpha Chi Omega. I'm a special use application. I'm going to share my screen. Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, the existing house was constructed in the mid-sixties and last renovated in two thousand and seven. It's a two-story structure with a partial basement. Almost twenty-one thousand square feet, approximately seventy beds and sixty-five parking spots. The house has served the sorority well, but it's time to do more than renovate and repair the property. This is the site on the screen of the existing house. It's surrounded on the north, the west, and the south by other Greek housing. On the east, it's bounded by commercial property, Stubborn Village. Please note also on this image that the west property line and the east property and both have two curb cuts. And then no sidewalks on the east and the south. Next is an image of the existing house looking to the northeast. This tree here is a sycamore, existing sycamore. We'll talk more about it later. Next is the image of the rear of the house looking from the south. That was the southwest and southeast. Apologize for that. These two trees here are significant. They are Schumard Oaks and we are proposing to keep those in the future in the new construction. The next slide is an image of the new entrance to the house, with the new house entry. Proposed structure is three stories with a partial basement. Thirty-six thousand square feet includes eighty-seven beds, study rooms, a commercial kitchen, dining room, and other ancillary spaces. Proposed site plan is what you're looking at now. The layout is efficient, optimizes available square footage. With the layout shown, we can provide seventy-seven spots, ten shy of the required amount. Also illustrated here is the addition of sidewalks along the south and east boundaries. The sidewalks will be installed to be ADA compliant. Part of our effort was appearing before the Board of Adjustment to request multiple variances based on this layout. It was approved unanimously by those present. Another request was, from the staff, was to illustrate in this image is to show the garbage truck turn study and we've shown that here. Also note that we've reduced the number of curb cuts in half. We have one on the west on College and one on the east on Elm. So we've got one-way traffic in and through the parking lot and then back out. Next, we're looking at the, talking about the impervious area of the historic impervious area and the new impervious area. The existing was thirty-seven thousand four hundred square feet. The new proposed is forty-three thousand three hundred and eighty. That's a difference of just under six thousand square feet. We are planning to detain this in the northeast portion of the parking lot so as not to increase the stormwater runoff to the storm system in the area. Next, we'll look at the proposed landscape plan. The tree that I mentioned in the first slide, the second slide, the sycamore. Following planning commission, I reached out to Councilman Holman to discuss the project. He and I have had some good dialogue with the discussion being centered around the sycamore and preserving it. With the layout shown, the sycamore conflicts with southwest corner of the building. Sadly, we don't have an unlimited budget and unlimited square footage on the site. And moving the proposed structure so it doesn't fall within the drip line would eliminate an estimated forty to forty-five percent of the parking shown, further reducing to an amount that just wouldn't be able to support the house. Another option Councilman Holman expressed was replace the tree with something similar size when fully mature and exceed the minimum standard. Following that, I talked to Tim Vermillion. Great conversation with him. He's a wealth of information, treasurer of the city of Norman. After reviewing the plan with Tim, he had one suggestion that I've integrated in this layout. The request was to change the species of two trees along College, this one here and this one here, to Tim's optimal choice, which is an American elm prairie expedition species. The tree itself, the trees will be five-inch caliper, single-litre specimen trees. We expect these trees to be eighteen, twenty feet tall when planted and grow at a rate of three to four feet per year. Hoping this would satisfy Councilman Holman's request that the tree is, you know, of the equal when it's mature and similar size. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
So first of all, I just want to thank you for having the conversation with our city forester who we have sung the praises of and will continue to do so for his efforts to preserve our tree canopy in Norman. And so I appreciate your intentionality and taking the time to consider Councilmember Holman's concern concerning this tree. So as I understand it, I'm sure he can speak to this more, but as I understand it, he's satisfied with, you know, what you're proposing. I'm really happy to know that you're keeping those two oaks as well. And appreciate you being willing to take a look at your landscaping plan and continue to improve it as best you can. So thank you for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the impervious surface coverage because you are increasing that. And you did touch briefly on your stormwater plan. You know, in this part of core Norman, the stormwater mitigation is of great interest to all of us on the council, but as well as all the residents who live there. So, you know, you are increasing it. Even though you're building a three-story building and I'm assuming that's to accommodate for the additional parking that you need. Is that right?
You're talking about the impervious area? Yeah, well, the, right, the house itself, we are allowed, the house itself is under the allowable forty percent. But when you add the parking and the sidewalks and the other hard surfaces, we do exceed the total sixty-five percent. And so the five thousand, the six thousand, just under six thousand square feet that we are adding, we are, the current site doesn't have any detention. But we are detaining that six thousand square feet in the northeast portion of our parking lot so as not to add to the stormwater runoff, the historical runoff, if you will. And so so the net change to to the system around it is zero with this five thousand extra square feet or six thousand, I'm sorry.
Okay. I think it's really important to point that out, that, you know, you didn't have a plan previously, but you are addressing the additional impervious surface, which is considerable. I mean, the total is considerable. So
Right.
To see that you have addressed that and, you know, minimized it as much as you could. And the other thing I was interested in is you mentioned that you have seventy-seven parking spaces, but you're increasing the capacity of the house to eighty-seven, I think you said. And so you need ten extra parking places and you currently have some type of arrangement with the fraternity across the street for that shared parking?
Yes, ma'am. That was one of the items on the Board of Adjustment that we went to. So the zoning requirement is for one spot per bed and we have eighty-seven beds. And so with this layout being, it's tight on the site, very efficient, optimize the space we have, we are still ten short. But the sorority has had an arrangement, it's actually the Capa Sigma House directly to the west. And so it's, you know, this one is under construction, but it's been completed since. But this house here, they've had an arrangement for years with them. They currently have ten spots. They've had as many as fifteen. But they can, they will plan to continue having that arrangement for the ten spots. And that's what we shared at the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission also, is that same information.
Okay, so
That gets us to our eighty-seven total. That gets us to our 87 total.
Right, and you anticipate that being something that's going to be available to you for the foreseeable future?
Yes, and they've also, I don't remember which house it was off the top of my head. They have entered into agreement with other, another, another Greek house around that same property in the past also. They don't have one right now, but there is no foreseeable issue with the agreement.
So is it a formal kind of agreement or?
Like written document? Not that I've seen. I don't know that there's one in place, but
Okay.
They've had it for years.
Okay. And then the other thing I was just curious about, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but there have been quite a few demolitions and rebuilding of houses in this particular area called South Greek. And so that, you know, that's what you're proposing to do to demolish the existing building and build a, that was a two-story structure, and now you're building a three-story structure.
Correct.
You're increasing the number of beds.
Yes.
So we've seen many, many different zoning cases over the last few years of off-campus housing that is highly desirable by Greek students. So I was just curious if you were part of the discussion of why this particular sorority has the confidence to increase their number of beds going forward?
Well, I can tell you that they have a very large pledge class every year. And so the numbers are there for them for that. It's also, you know, quite honestly, it's a function of, of, you know, making the money work. And so, you know, it's a balance, but I do know that their pledge classes continue to increase. And they're looking to also keep, they're trying to get the upperclassmen to stay in the house, whereas right now they can't. Kind of, you know, and so it's a two-sided thing. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just curious about that because I know every, every single house has a different policy as to how to maintain capacity
Yeah.
their beds. And, you know, this is just a challenging economic environment in some ways and post-pandemic. So I, I think it's encouraging that they're confident that they can, you know, build a larger house and expect to fill it, so.
Yeah, and they're very aware, they don't want to, you know, build something that, you know, falls into financial distress, you know, a year later. And so it's been something we've talked about.
Thank you.
They're being quite careful, you bet.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. My questions were very similar and I appreciate taking the time to discuss the issue with the trees. As I mentioned, I do actually live about a block or so from this house. I can see it from my front porch. And this tree is one of the biggest ones. The sycamore is one of the biggest ones in the neighborhood. And we have had a lot of issues in Norman over the last couple of years with large, healthy trees being removed for redevelopment. In many instances, not necessarily, in my opinion, as in not due to the new building being placed where the tree is, but just wanting to clear the whole lot to nothing and build from nothing. And that's really upset a lot of folks throughout Norman, especially folks who live in this area of Norman. The trees, the large trees that surround the old houses and stuff is really part of the quality of life that many of us expect around this area. And so we're definitely trying to improve our city policies and our processes on how we go about redevelopment and protecting our tree canopy and large, mature trees like this that, you know, have been there for, you know, decades and are not easily replaced, or at least can take a long time. So I do appreciate you taking the time to meet with our forester, Tim, and discussing this issue and coming to what I think is a pretty amenable solution. I definitely understand that the way the house, I would feel differently if the house placement was not where this is and you were just proposing to remove the tree because I would definitely have a problem with that. And, but I understand that the house has been designed this way and suggestions to do it otherwise were not made in the earlier on process of this. Maybe, and so here we are. And I do appreciate that we are saving those two other trees along Elmwood. And I did have some concern also about the impervious surface, increasing it in this area as Elm and Lindsay Street is in the top five of our stormwater flooding problems in the City of Norman currently. And so this area does have issues. Specific spot around this house doesn't have any flooding problems that I know of, but this general area neighborhood does. And so that is definitely a concern anytime we're increasing it. But I do think the removal of the front drive will be beneficial to traffic safety on College. People pulling in and out of there. It is heavily used by them. I know it's pretty convenient to have that in front of the house like that. But in College Street right there, this particular block of College actually has parking on the street. And so I'm not as concerned about the property having the required number of parking spots since there is street parking in the area that's available. And, you know, that there have been agreements in the past and currently with other Greek organizations to share parking, they have. So I don't find that to be a particular problem either. So given those circumstances, I do, I am going to support this tonight. I'm looking forward to seeing the new trees get put in and really see the whole project get done. It looks like it'll be very nice. And we've seen a lot of, I've seen, I've lived on this, this block, this street for 10 years, a little over 10 years, and so I've seen quite a few of these houses get completely rebuilt. And so I would definitely be looking forward to that and seeing how much nicer it might be. So and hopefully it functions better for the purposes that this sorority needs it for. So anyway, I appreciate that. I appreciate our forester, Tim, I don't know if he's on here, but I appreciate him going by the other day at my request and taking a look and giving some really sound feedback that is resulting in us getting a better project, I think. So thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your work on this project. Councilmember Peacock.
Just a quick question. Was there any thought given to doing on-street parking instead of, you know, dedicating so much of the site to drive aisles and increasing the impervious surfaces?
I mean, no is the answer, but even if just as a private entity, I don't, I don't know if on-street parking, I don't know how that would work very well here, honestly. But no.
I was just curious if the idea was explored. Appreciate it.
Not, not, not since I've been on it. Which is close to two years, but yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, I don't suppose you happen to know about what time of the year that aerial photo was taken, do you?
This one here?
Right.
No, it's off of Google Earth and it's not a recent one because one that I'd used earlier, there's some trees in the front of the house that actually have succumbed to weather and things. And the one, the one kind of on the southwest corner has already been removed. But, and it's old too because this house, the Capa Sigma House is finished. It's complete. And the thing is sorted out and it, this is, this is pretty old, I would say.
Okay, so I'm just glancing at that parking lot, trying to get an estimation on the number of beds that are in there now and looking at how many spots are available, wandering my head, is that, are those empty spots, is that like a Sunday afternoon when most of the members are probably there? Indicating there's
Well, yeah, I don't know. And they get quite a few spots of the existing house from the front drive too.
There's about 86% of those spots are filled right now. Yeah, applying that same kind of fill rate to a scenario where you got 87 beds, it'd be about 75 spots required. It looks like you're going to be brushing up right up at the limit of, with 77 parking spots. You know, hopefully that agreement with the neighbors next door doesn't lapse and that they allow you to use some of that parking because I think you're going to need it.
I understand.
But I just, just wondering, it's curiosity. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any idea what day, what time of year, even what year this was, what, you know. Those look like they're in, in class because there's cars there. I know I was there over the break and the lot was empty, so.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got options to accommodate situations where you might need an extra spot or two, so thank you.
You bet.
All right. Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Madam Clerk, I don't see any. Can you confirm? Okay.
I see none.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Seeing none, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
I think my only comment would be whoever did the first tear down and remodel of these Greek mansions, it's been like dominoes and they keep putting them in, and I'm all for increased property values. And I do enjoy taking our visitors down the sorority and fraternity row. It is rather impressive. So good work on the design on that one.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. Item 36, Ordinance 2021-31, Amending the Zoning Ordinance to Direct Historic District Appeals to the Board of Adjustment. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Sound moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Jeannie Snyder, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the Historic District zoning ordinance. On the appeals section, currently appeals of the Historic District Commission go directly to the City Council. And then if there's an appeal from there, they go to District Court. This amendment would be making the appeals from the Historic District go first to the Board of Adjustment. And the reasoning behind this is sometime in around 2011-ish, a citizen who had a home in the Chautauqua Historic District replaced some windows without getting a certificate of appropriateness as required. So then he did it in a, after he had installed the windows and that was denied by the Historic District Commission. He then appealed to the City Council, which the City Council also denied his use of the windows. And then in March of 2012, he filed an appeal with the District Court. It is still pending, believe it or not, nine years later. We actually had a hearing on that today. But there was a three-day trial and the plaintiff prevailed in that. City appealed to the Court of Civil Appeals. We won there. And that judge reversed and remanded it back to District Court with instructions that the claimant or the citizen who owned the historic property make an application to the City's Board of Adjustment, and that's what the process is now. It's not unusual. Oklahoma City's Historic District Commission also makes their appeals directly to the Board of Adjustment and not the City Council. So this amendment would follow what we were directed to by a judge. If we didn't do it and there was another appeal and we went down the same procedural highway that we did with this case, the Court of Civil Appeals is going to say, hey, we told you to go to the Board of Adjustment. So we're just following what that opinion has directed as to the other two amendments or to the Board of Adjustment, just including that the, and making it clear that the Historic District Commission appeals will go through the Board of Adjustment. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Hall?
Oh, of course there are. So I just want to make sure that we're really clear about this because there have been quite a few questions about why we have to do this. And so do we even have the option to maintain the status quo? Yeah, I mean, can we say we don't want to do this?
We could, but when another appeal was filed through the District Court, we're going to be directed back to the Board of Adjustment.
So I just wanted to be really clear that this is something that we've been directed to do by a judge. And we've already, as you outlined, we've already gone through this process once and took it back to the Board of Adjustment. So my next question is, the next step will remain the same if the appeal is denied by the Historic District Commission and then the next step is to go to Board of Adjustment and that's also denied. Does the applicant still have the option of taking it to District Court?
Yes, that would be their only option.
Okay.
If they disagreed with the decision.
So that appeal path is still in place?
Yes, it is.
And this would only apply to cases that were denied at the Historic District Commission level, right?
Yes, for cases that were denied and that the applicant disagreed with that decision and wanted to take it further.
And then you did mention that Oklahoma City, this has just been the way they've operated for a number of years now.
I believe so.
Okay. And then the other thing that was brought up at the Planning Commission that I thought was a really good point was this is a pretty big change as far as the appeal path to go to the Board of Adjustment. And I'm assuming that there's some kind of orientation process with the Board of Adjustment members. And I'm hoping that we can provide some kind of orientation or training to get the Board of Adjustment members up to speed on the Historic District guidelines, you know, why some of the decisions are made by the Historic District Commission so that they have some background when they're making these decisions. Possible?
Yes, Councilmember, it is. And at the Board of Adjustment hearing on when this case that created this issue, Mr. Rick Knighton did that presentation and he did, as usual, an excellent job of doing a pretty good background for the Board of Adjustment to let them know, but perhaps an orientation for the Board of Adjustment members. Obviously, we're in the middle of redoing the guidelines, but presenting them with the guidelines and maybe having some type of a study session with the Board of Adjustment. So they would feel more comfortable when these items come before them because it is a different, as you know, a little bit different language and understanding about what's going on. Fortunately, I tried to think about it today. I think we've had three appeals. One is just still kind of in limbo and one went to City Council and then this one. So in the last, probably as long as I could remember. So they don't happen very often because, as you said about Anise and her staff before, we work with the applicants pretty closely, so they know what's coming. But that's a great idea.
Yeah, and that was a great segue because that was my last question. How many times have we actually had to face this in the last five years or so?
And, well, including the one that started back in 2012, I believe it's been three.
Have we ever had an instance before this particular case that's been in litigation for so long? Have we ever had any other case that's even similar to something like this?
As, as far as I can remember, the one that's pending and it's been a, it's, 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 it's pending is the only one that was appealed to district court. I might be wrong about that because I hadn't been involved with the Historic District Commission, but I, it's probably, I have been for the last eight or nine years. I don't, I'd have to think about that or ask around, but it's been a while. It just doesn't happen that often.
And so the good news with this litigation that's been underway for so long is that ultimately the courts did uphold, um, the, authority of the Historic District Commission to make these kinds of decisions.
Yes, that they held our ordinances as constitutional and valid.
So I'll take that.
I, I will too.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I can, I can recall those two, uh, I believe, one being on Miller Avenue and, uh, Amendros' property. And voting against that one, uh, that appeal. And then, um, the other one I remember was on Chautauqua and I think I'm in favor of that appeal, but I think it failed five to four, maybe. Um, but, uh, I, and I think I recall the litigation one you're talking about, maybe I recall a house on corner of Boyd and Flood, um, that the windows were changed, but they've been changed to the way they're supposed to be, I thought anyway.
Not yet. It was, uh, Boyd and, uh, LaHoma or College. It's actually the house that's on the, it's the easily case and it's actually, the picture of the house is on the front of our historic guideline.
It's the, it's a corner of Boyd and LaHoma.
LaHoma, okay.
LaHoma, one block over, okay. Yeah, I was thinking I remember that. And then, um, when I first ran in two thousand and eleven, um, I didn't know the, I didn't know him very well, but Glenn Brown was the first max contributor to my campaign ever. And so.
You're right, Councilmember.
And now he doesn't live, uh, here anymore, but, uh, but yeah, definitely seen it come across a few times. And, and they definitely have been very unique stories each time as well that were pretty complicated and intricate as well. If you, if you didn't know anything about historic guidelines or have ever paid attention to it or live in this part of town or something, it could be a lot to understand. So, yeah, I would definitely agree that Councilmember Hall, that we can, hopefully our Board of Adjustment members, um, can have some sort of education or information or background can help, help, help them understand this better. So, thank you.
It's an acquired taste.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
Seeing none, Mayor.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to our final item of the evening, item thirty-seven, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council only. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Council is not able to participate in dialogue with the speaker under this particular item.
Mayor, we do have, um, miscellaneous discussion this evening. Um, we have one getting set up in the, uh, conference room now.
I missed that. I, I need to get a better internet connection in my office, just, just saying. What was that?
We have one setting for public comment right now should be available for us in just a moment.
Thank you.
While they are getting ready, I'm gonna go ahead and call on one, um, that's going to, uh, be speaking to us virtually. This is Michael Blanc. Michael, go ahead.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Um, one of the things that I wanted to bring up tonight, just to address the council as a whole, is, uh, our increased need to start looking at that new, uh, the new funds released by the federal government for COVID relief. Uh, I know that, that some of that has been allotted or can be allotted to infrastructure improvements and I think this is a fantastic time to think about using that for expanding or even, uh, developing a public access to, uh, to fiber optic internet, uh, especially buried lines. This is a fantastic time for us to do this. The money is on the table and working families in Norman desperately need that. We need to bridge the digital divide if we want to make sure that we remain competitive as a city. And for me personally, I take this from a, from an emergency preparedness standpoint. Um, you know, I think always about the Oklahoma standard, you know, living in Oklahoma, we understand. Uh, every spring we learn the lesson again, that there will always be a next time. So whether that's a tornado, an ice storm, or God forbid, but we need to be prepared, another pandemic. And so, uh, this is, this is the time. We don't usually get a lot of federal funds on the table. So for me, this is, this is an issue we need to address. So, thank you for your time. Uh, once again, by the way, my name is Michael Blanc. I'm from Ward Two. Uh, and again, buried lines, great investment. This is the time. We don't usually get the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanc. And just to clarify, we have not received. From the Department of Treasury yet on how we can expend those funds, so I do appreciate the feedback on that. Thank you. Are we ready with the public computer? I see it.
Have a seat. Should I take my mask off for this?
Take it down.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, Ms. Brookins.
Oh, hi. This is Kathy Brookins. I live at sixteen oh eight Ridgemont Circle. And the reason I'm here, I'm trying to get the city of Norman Police Department to get my jewelry back from Maria Cox, or it may be Lawson. It's either Cox or Lawson. But she stole a few thousand dollars worth of jewelry out of my house and I've heard people say, well, you have to be able to identify the jewelry. Well, one ring in there is a dome ring I had made out of my first wedding rings. There's not another one in the world like it because it's a special maid. I had a guy who worked total make it. And then she took, um, three necklaces, a strand of pearls that my daughter, who had just died, given me. She took a ring my daughter gave me that has now died. So I've had to endure this and I've never had anything this horrible in my life. When I lost my daughter, that was the most horrible thing. But this lady has caused me nightmares. She's caused me to cry. It, it's just horrible and I want the police to chase her down. She took a big bag of medicine out of my house. My husband's having, uh, trouble with his hip, his right hip, and he's had several surgeries. And when you go home from those rehab places, they send you home with big bags of plastic medicine. I don't know if you've ever seen that. Well, she took that. So she's taken jewelry and medicine and she's threatened me because I tried to get to her house and she says I'm disturbing the peace. Her daughter may be in on it. I don't know. I don't know that for a fact. But anyhow, I would appreciate the police department getting my jewelry back.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I know that either the city manager or Chief Foster would be happy. If we can collect your contact information from our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Elsery would be happy to give you a call.
Okay, that sounds good. I'd appreciate it immensely. It's not that it's like the Queen of England jewelry, but it's my sentimental stuff.
I understand, and I am sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
All right, that is our final item of the night unless there's any more public comment.
We do have, um, more. Council, uh, Mayor Clark, um, now we'll call on Caleb Creed. Go ahead, Mr. Creed.
Hi y'all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi y'all. My name's Caleb Creed. I live out in Ward Five. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. So you know, okay, during the last year, families all had to make this difficult decision to either risk their children's safety or use virtual school options over their private internet connections. But these choices were available to the middle class and upper class, but unfortunately, this was not a choice for many of the poor people in our community. So families suffered, some greatly, because they simply lacked the information infrastructure that would have allowed them to access education, health, jobs, and a lot of other resources safely. So I was reading from the Treasury Department's fact sheet on the American Rescue Plan today and it says this, "One particularly salient infrastructure," this is quote, this is from that, "one particularly salient infrastructure challenge has been the digital divide and the absence of foundational conditions that enable network connectivity and access. As more and more areas of work and education move online, this divide risks leaving many American families behind." And then it says, "The American Rescue Plan specifically provides ten billion dollars to cover the cost of capital projects like broadband infrastructure," end quote. So the way I see it, we have the opportunity to do something big for the poor and working people in Norman. This is something that already has grassroots support in the community. Many of the people Red Dirt Collect advocates for and speaks with often were devastated by the pandemic, especially where disability and poverty painfully intersected. They have expressed enormous enthusiasm about the possibility of universal broadband. This has already, this already has a mandate from the citizens of the city as they continue to elect city council members who have advocated for these positions in their platform, these positions in their platform. So I feel we are uniquely well positioned to close a fundamental inequality and to partially remedy an injustice while also improving the interconnectedness of our citizens and businesses. And I'm here to advocate for quick and decisive action to that end when it becomes possible. And that's all I was gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Creed. I appreciate that. Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head that you have a council that is quite supportive of this. And when I get asked how we're gonna spend that and what we're gonna do with it, I'll say as much as we possibly can. So I look forward to seeing what we can do with it and providing the most opportunity for Norman as possible.
I'll now recognize Philip Sype. Go ahead, Mr. Sype.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, excellent. Um, so, uh, I'm Philip Sype, uh, from Ward Seven. Um, and I just wanted to also sort of make a comment on the internet. The possibility of municipal internet. Um, you know, we've all seen COVID that has shaken the whole country and Norman's no exception. You know, pandemics put a strain on systems and expose their flaws. And I think the use of the American Rescue Plan funds to support the development of something that will remove the strain is something that we should do. Um, you know, I think, uh, some people might say that, you know, why internet access? Uh, people could already go to the library and have internet access. But that's not always reliable, you know, like during the pandemic, libraries were closed. Uh, and they should have been because they were a dangerous source of spread potentially. But with that, people lost access to services. Uh, it was a lot harder to file for unemployment for some people, for example, that were only available or, or more easily available on the internet. Uh, and the library just frankly can't handle the need, the internet needs of the entire city's poor and working class and all the people that can't afford uh, their own private internet connection. So I, I agree with the last speaker, um, that we should use this, this sort of influx of funds that came from this recent legislation to provide a broad municipal broadband service to the people of Norman that's affordable, specifically affordable to those who are poor and working class. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We have one more that, um, signed up on our website. Um, doesn't have the hand raised, but, um, recognize Alexandra Penner. Alexandra Penner, if you would like to speak.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, I am also here to speak on, um, municipal broadband internet. And I think municipal broadband internet in our city is, it's an accessibility issue. Um, there are a lot of disabled and elderly people who have limited ways to access the broader community, especially during COVID. If you are homebound for any reason, whether it's because you're, you're high risk for COVID or you have some, or you have, um, some other disability, the internet is a lifeline to the outside world that allows you to work, socialize, order groceries, go to church, talk to your family and more, and that lifeline is severed without internet. And so it's, it's a, it's a disability accessibility issue, having, having reliable, high-speed internet for all people in our city. And it's also, it'll have, uh, economic benefits for our city as well. The modern job market is heavily dependent on the internet. Jobs are posted online, applied for online, and sometimes even interviewed for online. Uh, universe, so universal broadband in Norman will benefit both businesses and workers by reducing labor market friction and making it easier for job seekers and employers to match up. Uh, it'll, it'll, it'll be easier to hunt for a job and it'll be easier for businesses to find well-qualified applicants. And there's, there's good research to back up that that will reduce both the amount of time people spend unemployed and the amount of time that, uh, job vacancies are open with, uh, more general access to the internet. A two thousand and thirteen study in the, uh, British Royal Economic Journal found that workers who use the internet to job hunt find new jobs twenty-five percent faster after control than people who don't use the internet after controlling for education and skills. And that difference is likely larger now because job boards have become much more ubiquitous than they were in two thousand and thirteen when that study was done. Also, remote work was starting to, uh, become a thing before COVID and is not going to go away after COVID. And if Norman has reliable, high-speed internet for all, it will be a very attractive place for remote workers by combining Norman's low cost of living compared to, to say, many major cities with fast, reliable internet. Norman is kind of, would be an ideal place for a remote worker to set up camp. Those are the main things I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, that wraps up the public comments, Mayor.
All right. Well, I appreciated all that engagement this evening. I hope it continues. It looks like our system for signing up for miscellaneous comments is working well. So thank you for that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.